Everyone, please join me in.
United States of America. This is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is a public hearing regarding liquor licenses. Would you please brief the licenses? Question.
Number fifty-four, the limited retail liquor license. Ellis Bistro Bar and Grill Liquor License. Parkus Restaurant Liquor License, syrup of the hot springs, retail liquor license. Snowing Mountain Brewery is microbrewery permit with distribution. Valley Liquors Retail Liquor License, Rocket Bar Retail Liquor License, Lazy River Cantina Retail Liquor License, Hotel Wolf Retail Liquor License.
Okay. We'll start with the American Legion Police Department. Do you have any complaints or notes or anything we need to know on this?
Wishes, sure.
The wishes? Good, okay. How about Bella Bristow?
No issues.
And Harvest?
No issues.
Saratoga Hot Springs?
No issues.
Snowy Mountain Brewery?
No issues.
Valley Liquor?
No issues.
Russick Bar?
No issues.
Lazy River Cantina?
No issues.
Hotel Wolf?
Also no issues.
Okay. Well, I'll open it up to anybody from the public if they would like to speak regarding any one of these liquor licenses. I'll leave it open. If nobody talks, I'll leave it open until ten after six.
Doesn't mean that we have to have ten minutes of silence. We can visit.
You just said if nobody talked.
Doesn't mean we have to have ten minutes of silence, does it? We can visit a little bit and stuff.
Yeah, it's open to the public.
It's a long time for me to go without saying nothing. Yeah.
Okay, I have six ten. There's been no discussion on the liquor license. Uh, the chair to entertain a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'd make a motion to close this public hearing.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Into the second public hearing. We do have a forum. Uh. And the second one is on a zone change. And the area would be. Uh, property can be generally described as undeveloped. East of County Road three oh one, starting at the intersections of Chatterton Drive, County Road three oh one, continuing north along the County Road three oh one. Approximately one thousand feet. Uh, it'll be a zone change from light industrial to heavy industry. Industrials, uh, the property is owned by Rodney Bennett. Do you have anything you need to add to that? Emery?
Uh, well, attached to your packet, remember?
Yeah, I know, you're fine.
So attached to your packet was, uh, the finding that zoning's findings from the application of the subsequent hearing as they held together. Help, um, the commission voted, uh, Thomas Kildave vote, motion to approve it. And some of their concerns, some of the things that they addressed on the packet. Certain about the road. No possible uses in the future. Things like that.
Yeah. I had a discussion with a couple of the planning committee people. And, uh, and findings on the road, that road's had. Numerous amounts of weight all over it for years and years and years. I don't see where that's going to cause any problem whatsoever.
Right, and that, and being able to identify from that specific operation. Who would then take some use of that route, yes. Then also, um, even if this were to go through, they are required to get a limited mining permit through DQ, which they are working on. I think they're just in a holding pattern because they're at a point where some significant funds get expended to get that permitted, and if this one doesn't go through. Then there's. That.
That's it. If you look at the area. The area just across Chatterton from it is heavy industry. Uh. Correct. This all males property is all heavy industry, so. Uh, that's something to be considered. Council, have any comments?
I just think, uh, anything we can do to stimulate industrial growth in an industrial area is good. That side of town puts a lot of money into the local economy. And his, his business has put a lot of money into it over the years.
Any other comments? Okay. Any comments from the public? It's now open. I'll leave it open till six twenty. Unless we get lots of comments. About one minute remaining. Is there any more discussion? Hey, having no fruit or did a discussion, uh, chair to entertain a motion to go ahead and close this public.
I'd make the motion to close this public hearing.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the council meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Yeah. Mayor Chuck Davis?
Here.
Here.
Cory Ocker?
Here.
That's on both our firsts.
Here.
Councilor Jerry Sorey.
Here.
Hey, we do have a forum. We'll move on. Everybody had a chance to look over the agenda. Any questions, changes? Hey, do you have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as read.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, did everybody have a chance to look at, uh, the last many minutes? Were there any corrections or additions to those? Do you have a motion to go ahead and approve the minutes from the November fifth meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November fifth meeting.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the bills, the deposits, and the amount of one million. One hundred, one. Hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Counts payable in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. And metals in the amount of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty. Dollars and thirty-seven cents, and payroll in the amount of forty, one thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the bills?
I'd make a motion to approve the bills.
Do I have a second?
I'll second them.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, is there any correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to items from the public. Like, the first thing we have is a special events permit from Amanda Notwell, the ice fishing derby. Hello.
Good evening.
Where are you?
I'm on day.
You guys can imagine.
F forty-second, Daniel. Longest running fishing derby in Wyoming.
Is it really?
It is. We were the very first one.
Okay. Same as usual?
Same as usual. Nothing's changed. Third weekend in January seventeenth and eighteenth. Um, I already have. I had twenty people already registered before Halloween. So they're very optimistic that we're gonna have ice.
Okay. Uh, does the council have any questions? Have her permit been filled out correctly? There's no question to chair to entertain a motion to go ahead and approve. And this, uh, ice fishing derby permit, the forty-second.
Would be our forty-fourth, but we had two years where there were kill-offs.
Okay.
Um, the only thing, and I put in there, John, was like to drive through, just because I will be putting in a liquor, open liquor permit with this. I was just waiting to, um, make sure I had. I wanted that to go through before you had any problems. But, um, so I'll submit that later with our payment, um, because all them fishermen bring, you know.
Yes.
They're out there, and, um, so I'll fill that out, but no one's been ruling the last few years or anything. And I have more, um, game warden presence also. That'll be in attendance.
Okay.
So.
So I take it you don't have an issue with it, chief? Okay. Well, the chair would take a motion to go ahead and approve this. Ice fishing derby permit, special event, Matt.
I would make the motion to go ahead and approve this fishing derby permit.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. We'll have an ice fishing derby again.
Or we'll have a fishing derby.
If we have nights.
If may require votes. We'll have a fishing derby.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, we have David Boss with Iwannas Club about the ice fishing rink. Or ice fishing. The ice rink, fishing on the brain there.
We could think about that, I guess, putting a, we haven't thought about putting fish in the ice rink, but, uh. Yeah, so I'm, uh, Dave Boss representing Flat Valley Kiwanis this evening, and just wanted to give you a quick update on the, um, ice rink. And, um, yeah, so Kiwanis is a global community service organization open to men and women of all ages. Um, with a general focus on serving kids in communities. Um, Flat Valley Kiwanis has been in, um, in the valley for thirty-seven years, and, you know, we support. Um, kids, families, seniors, kind of the whole segment of the community, uh, depending on what the needs are. Um, years ago, we identified an opportunity to, um, provide a winter time outdoor recreational opportunity for kids and families. And the ice rink was, um, the outcome of that, thinking that that was a, a need we could maybe help fill in the community, so, um. We have set up and operated the ice rink now for, uh, this will be our sixth year coming up. Um, we started out next to Lollipops, and the last four years, uh, there, this would be, would be our fourth year at that. Um, within the skate park to do that. Um. So we, um, coordinated with, uh, the rec department and, um, uh, the, our plan would be to, I guess, first to, would like to. Thank, um, the town for the opportunity to have that facility. And allow us to, um, work with the ice rink there the last few years. Um, it, it's worked really well. Appreciate the rec department helping, uh, with, um, publicity and then donation for skates last year. And Emery's helping out with some of the lighting and other facilities related things this year, so. Um, the, uh. Um, the basic plan we have for this year would be to set things up, yeah, in December. Fire department's been helping us fill the, fill the ice rink. We're hoping for cold weather for everything, um, fingers crossed. Um, we've usually been able to open sometime late in December, early in January. And then, you know, again, weather depending, we've been able to keep the rink open, uh, usually till March. Last year was February. Um, and, you know, we've had, we've probably had use, there's kids over there, um, you know, most of the days that it's open. Um, and so, and the kids seem to have a great time. Um, over there, there's usually, you know, lots of screaming and yelling and having fun and just that sort of thing, so that's, we really feel like it's been a great. Um, great opportunity to provide that, you know, get kids outside in the winter time and let them run around, so. Um, yeah, just wanted to let you guys know, um, kind of what the. Um, yeah, just wanted to let you guys know, um, kind of what the plan was. If anybody has any questions, concerns, suggestions, um, open it up for that, and otherwise just invite folks to, um, come check it out and, uh, bring your kids and your grandkids, and um, they're free and open to the public, there's skates on site, um, so, you know, it's really been a, um, just an opportunity for for kids to get out and run around and get some energy out during the winter.
So what's your, like, what days are you, Wilson? What's your hours?
It's, um, it's basically open, um, open all the time. We, with, you know, it's unsupervised, basically, we, you know, have signs up the request that, you know, younger kids have parents with them, um, but it's basically open, um, open all the time.
Okay.
Um, and skates are just left out there. There's some trainers, you know, we've just kind of left stuff out there where if people don't have their own gear, they can just show up and find a pair of skates that works for them and jump on the ice and have fun.
Great. Does council have any questions? Uh, do I have a motion? I, I assume you want to use it at Veterans Island.
We've appreciated that. It's worked great, and if you guys are supportive of that, we would love that, yeah, so.
And do I have a motion to go ahead and allow the, uh, Kiwanis Club to put up their ice skating rink at Veterans Island in December? And, uh, remove it when needed, it might be April?
Yes, I'd make the motion to go ahead with it.
Okay, I have a motion to go ahead and approve, uh, the ice rink at Veterans Island. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate anything you can do to keep that cold weather coming.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, Nick Hatterley's back. Will it read from there?
Uh, she says it, I'll say it. Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, town councillors, thank you once again for, uh, letting me take some of your time. As I promised, a couple of weeks ago, I have with me here Mr. Ashley Bright. He is the CEO of big, uh, excuse me, Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming, based up in Casper. He's been with Boys and Girls Clubs for thirty-five years. He's been executive leadership almost over thirty of those or about thirty of those. And he's been CEO in Wyoming for twenty-five years, yeah, so, uh, he's with me here today, um, and last time you asked the results of the feasibility study that we conducted, and so I'm, I have a presentation here to go over that, uh, with y'all. Um, and then we can get into some questions and stuff like that. Do you have anything to add?
No, I've, it's an honor for me to be here and nice to meet you all.
Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We'll just try to get right into it. This is, um, this was prepared by the consulting firm, and it was the presentation that was prepared to give to the board of the Boys and Girls Club folks. So we'll have an executive summary of the report that we can share with you all later. Uh, but we'll just kind of go over this. It's maybe a little hard to see, but this just describes the process that was, that was, that we went through. Uh, first was, came up with the idea and drafted a document describing what the idea was, and identified key leaders and community members in the community that we wanted to talk to about that idea. Uh, those people were then invited and scheduled to come meet with, uh, the consulting firm. Uh, we also had some focus groups in that process. The rec commission, uh, participated in that. Some of you participated in that process. The interviews took place, uh, and then after that, you know, they analyzed everybody's responses and prepared these results. Throughout that process, there were some themes that sort of arose, uh, the strengths and opportunities. You know, the following were the key themes that came through consistently in interviews that we had with people in the community, and the perceived need for Boys and Girls Club, you know, the positive reputation of the club model was a strength. Uh, people liked the facility location, the vision that we had for the, uh, the combined rec center, Boys and Girls Club concept. They think they really felt like the community was ready for this, and they also identified a substantial philanthropic potential in Saratoga to be able to support uh, the capital fundraising. We also have challenges and concerns that would came up consistently through some of the interviews, you know, staff recruitment and retention. This is one I've heard a lot. Donor fatigue and competition, among other, you know, there's a lot of do-gooding going on in Saratoga, a lot of people asking for money. Uh, concerns about program participation estimates that we initially came up with, uh, through our case, our initial design of the idea. The numbers we used, it reminded me, it was two hundred and fifty kids, something about where the, the projections for, that we would serve. Uh, people thought that number was high. That number's based on percentage of participation of over, uh, of overall school district enrollment in other areas where Boys and Girls Clubs serve in Wyoming. What's that number you get about on average in Wyoming?
Yeah, so, uh, so basically the school district numbers that we, that we receive, about fifty percent become members, and then about eighty percent are total use served, other, serving other youth through partnerships, through, uh, other agencies and organizations that come together and collaborate with Boys and Girls Club.
Um, the facility scale, the size of the facility we were talking about was a concern for people. And then, of course, just an overall understanding or lack of understanding of the club model. People who knew what clubs were, had a positive view. People who didn't know, thought it was glorified babysitting, sort of like what was going on at the hub, uh, which was operated by Boys and Girls Club before.
Big Brother, Big Sisters.
Mixed it up twice. It's the one mistake we gotta not make, because that's, that's the exact confusion, right? So the hub was operated by Big Brothers, Big Sisters down at where the dough do it now. Um, and it was, was, in a way, uh, glorified babysitting. They weren't doing professional programming, career planning, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, so there were sort of some goals and recommendations that came from the consulting firm on this, and we don't have to read all this in great detail, but they basically suggested a range of twelve point two to eighteen point one million dollars fundraising campaign for this project over the period of eighteen months. That range is predicated on people being asked, how much would you donate? And we got a range from people. A lot of people, I think ninety-seven percent or something like that, said they would support the project of the people that we interviewed. And that's the numbers. Those are real numbers that came from people's mouths that we came up with. Um, that would include money for construction of the facility, two years of operations on the Boys and Girls Club side to ensure media delivery of the program, and then an endowment to make sure we've got an investment fund that's thrown off cash to be able to subsidize this thing moving forward. The median number is fifteen point one five million dollars of that range. And the number that we landed on, or that the Boys and Girls Club Board landed on for the target for the fan, uh, for the fundraiser, is fifteen and a half. This table just shows the low end where those, where that twelve point two came up with. It's not the high end or the range, but, you know, about two and a half, uh, were projected from people that we interviewed. Uh, uh, additional giving was seven hundred and seventy-two, some interviewed but not ready to, to project a gift. That is a, uh, an estimate based on the experience of these consultants, people that said, hey, yes, we support it, yes, we would give, but at this time we're not ready to commit. Um, and so they just, based on their history with doing these sorts of campaigns, they put a number on that. These, uh, referred verbal commitments were the prior commitments that I had secured for the rec center with the pool project. Uh, one of which has been since documented at six million for just one, as I mentioned last time I was here, from the owner of the Silver Spur uh, foundations. So they researched twenty-nine different foundations, and, and they project that we, uh, will likely be able to get about two and a half from foundation grants. And then the public phase of the fundraising campaign, that's the part that everybody sees at the end, where it's like, hey, we're almost there, and these are your small dollar community kind of donations, bake sales, that kind of stuff, so. This just describes the leadership that will be in place during this campaign process, which is an eighteen-month, uh, proposal. So Ashley will be at the top. He responds and answers to the board of the, of the Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming. So he works for them ultimately, and so he would be sort of the executive leader in charge of, of the whole overall campaign. On local level, we're, uh, we have two co-chairs. That would be Danny Tanner and I. Danny was with me here last time. And then the campaign management, we have, uh, elected to continue retaining the same consulting firm that helped us with this study. So they have staff. They are currently telling us what to do, you know, it's like they're strategizing, they've got detailed lists, and they're kind of directing us so that we can stay on task with this. And then the bottom would be sort of campaign committees, and we're tending to assemble a group of local people that would help us uh, move this fundraising effort and this project forward. The budget for this eighteen-month process is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and it's kind of outlined in, in phases below. Uh, the people that are involved with this, um, are already making donations. We have people that are already donating to cover this expense. Um, Danny, uh, gave me permission to tell you that her and her husband are one of the larger donors that are funding the consultants on this, so, uh, I think that just shows the commitment of the people that are involved in this. You know, we're spending two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars just to try to raise this money, and we already have donors that are willing to pay for that. Uh, the fourth recommendation was the timetable. A lot of this time, you know, if it was up to me, we would have built this thing three years ago, but, you know, and I told Ashley, like, let's break ground in May. We can do this. But the timetable matters. We need more time than that just to get organized, and the, the fundraising season, if there is one in Saratoga, is somewhat dependent upon old baldy, uh, folks being around, and a lot of them leaving the winters. A lot stayed too, but, um, that's a consideration with that timing. This is sort of, as I said, the consultants are really task masters. They're keeping us on task. This just shows our plan. It's hard to see, but we got phases, pre-campaign phase, that's where we are right now, November of twenty twenty-five. Phase one, phase two, and then the public phase is like that last part where we hope to have achieved ninety percent of the fundraising done, sort of call it the quiet phase in the fundraising campaign lingo, but because this is a partnership with the town, we're obviously not being very quiet about it. It's just we're not out doing public fundraisers, trying to collect small dollars. The main reason is we don't want to take any money out of anybody's pocket until we're sure this thing's gonna happen, you know? If we don't have ninety percent committed from major donors that have the ability to make it happen, we're not gonna go take money from the community, the smaller, you know, folks that really want to support the project, but, you know, we're not, until we are sure it's gonna move forward, we're not gonna do that. Um, this, I'm not sure why it was a separate recommendation, but this is saying that we should pursue foundation grants of up to two and a half. That was outlined earlier. And then this, um, this last recommendation is kind of an important one, because it talks about some of the things that we need to address with respect to the weaknesses and concerns that were raised by folks like through the interview process, right? So donor confidence and operating budget transparency, how's it gonna work, right? Who's gonna pull the strings on this thing? And if there's questions, Ashley can talk about how these other clubs in smaller communities around Wyoming, under the umbrella of Boys Girls Clubs, uh, Central Wyoming operate. But essentially, there will be a local sort of committee. We'll have it, we'll have a couple chairs at the table on the board at the Central Wyoming level, and money raised here can stay here and be earmarked for here. It's not like we're gonna be buying a roof for the new, for the club and do boys or something like that. Um, but we can talk more about that if there are questions. Stapping and staying, stapping and sustainability was one of the most frequently raised concerns. Um, you know, so we're, we've got a plan to try to address that. Develop a recruitment retention strategy. What's pay, what's the pay and benefits gonna look like for the employees in this Boys and Girls Club? Exploit partnerships with other people in the community, the high school, um, University of Wyoming internships, competitive wages, coming up with housing solutions. These are all challenges that the school district deals with, the hos- hospitals currently dealing with, you know. Major employee, employers in the town, the mill, constantly looking for housing to make sure that they can get employees hired. So these are challenges that, they are what they are, but we're uh, committed to addressing them, trying to come up with ideas to, to resolve them or figure out a way. The next, you know, community validation and access planning, uh, wanting to do deeper due diligence, make sure that the projections are gonna accurately match actual use. So I mentioned, you know, the number of two hundred and fifty youth served, and do we really need a size of facility that we think we need? Um, so the plan is to do a broader survey of caregivers. We, the survey was conducted last spring. We got low participation, but a hundred percent of the people said they would use the facility, but there were only like thirty responses. Versus when I did a survey, when I started the rec center pool initiative, we got over two hundred and, over two hundred responses. So we're gonna take another crack at that, trying to get a better survey, get a better, you know, pulse from the community on what's actually needed here, what would be used. And we'll expand those, you know, surveys out to Hannah, Oak Mountain, et cetera. Um, community education was, interviews revealed confusion about the history of Boys and Girls Club in the valley versus Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I already mentioned that. I've already botched it a couple of times. It is confusing. Um, but we're gonna undertake an effort to make sure people understand what clubs actually do. I, I talked about this a lot when I was here two weeks ago, and you can ask the man himself if you have questions about it, but it's professional programming, financial literacy, career programming, tutoring, like real-life stuff that's gonna help kids not only graduate high school, but graduate with a plan, right? So that they don't go, whatever, sent up for three years at UW just to drop out and realize they want to go make a lot of money as an electrician, which is fine, but maybe if they had a better idea what their goals were, they, you know what I mean? More efficient use of their time and community resources. And then last, you know, in c- community engagement and design. Um, we had, the proposed site is well-received. It's, we're proposing up, as I mentioned last time, same site that I wanted to build the rec center with the pool, which is between the library and the high school. Um, the interesting thing I thought, that, you know, the consultant said, everybody, we just had a sample floor plan and the stuff that we showed people, and almost everybody wanted to start, oh, you need to move this here and do this here and move this stuff underground, so it shows that people have a vision, that this thing could become real, but also that they want to give their feedback in it, and, and that is part of the plan. Uh, you know, hold town hall-style meetings to explain what we're doing, get community feedback. We've recently engaged an architect up in Casper that's built Boys and Girls Clubs in Wyoming before and been involved in other recreation facility projects. And they're just, we've given them kind of a wish list based on existing recreational programming and the needs of the Boys and Girls Club, and it's very, I don't think kind of, you can put the pad on a sketch or anything yet. It's just we're looking at square footages, trying to fit square footages within the projected budget and that kind of thing. So that's basically what the Boys and Girls Club Board was looking at when they decided to pursue this project. And as I said, I think it was right before I came to see you last time, the board of, uh, Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming, as well as the Boys and Girls Club Central Wyoming Foundation, which is their fundraising arm, they voted to approve proceed, proceeding with this project. And as I said last time, I would like the town to also support the project. We're not asking to commit to anything yet, but I do think a resolution in support of the project, giving us access to the site so we can begin geotech and, you know, topo survey work and this kind of thing, just due diligence on the site so that we can proceed with the design. That's built into the resolution that we're asking for. And then the last thing is, we would like, uh, we would like the town to begin negotiating with us. Let's talk about it. Let's solve these problems, you know? You don't have to have the problems solved to start, but you have to start to be able to solve the problems, you know? Everybody can point out that, hey, what about this? What about that and the other? But until we, like, engage in the process, we're never gonna figure it out if we don't take a crack at it. So that's all I have, and Ashley, if you want to add anything, I-
I'm, I'm, uh, mayor, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, I'm here for questions that you have uh, that he did not cover, but he did such a great job, so I don't know what I, I don't know what I can add, but.
I think it would be, it would be helpful a little bit to talk about why the club started looking at Saratoga.
Sure.
And why you think bringing a club to Saratoga would add value to the community?
Sure, sure. Again, my name's Ashley Bright. I'm the CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Wyoming. Our organization has been in existence since nineteen sixty-nine, and so we're fifty-six years old. And for many years, we were serving just Casper. And, uh, it was about two decades ago that we started looking at other areas around Central Wyoming that needed, uh, needed support for their young people. Mission is to, to inspire and enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to help them realize their full potential as responsible and productive citizens. So we were, we were, um, hearing from the community that, hey, what would it look like for a Boys and Girls Club in our community? There's nothing for our kid, there's, there's nothing for our kids to do after school and in the summer, and we need enrichment for our young people. So it's been about two decades where we've, we have, uh, been able to build Boys and Girls Clubs and start Boys and Girls Clubs in, uh, in the communities around- been able to build Boys and Girls Clubs and start Boys and Girls Clubs in uh, in the communities around Central Wyoming. In twenty three, uh, January of twenty three, uh, Danny Tanner uh contacted um, her daughter-in-law who serves on our board and and said, Stuart and I, she wouldn't tell her daughter-in-law this, but Stuart, that, this is a little background, Stuart and Danny moved here in twenty one. And uh, Danny Tanner was an administrator at one of the uh alternative high schools in Casper. And that alternative high school would bring their kids down to the club every single day for a breakfast program and for recreation because the school couldn't handle that. And so um, that's where I ended up really building a relationship with the Tanner family. So in twenty three, she's, she said, what would it look like for us to have a Boys and Girls Club in Saratoga? I really, I really would love to um explore that opportunity. So uh, so through some communication with Boys and Girls Clubs of America, and I do want to say the Rollins, Boys and Girls Club of Carvin County is a separate organization from the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Wyoming. So we were working with the Boys and Girls Club of Rollins in terms of the communication. The Boys and Girls Club of Rollins shared with us that they didn't have the infrastructure to uh, to carry the conversation and Boys and Girls Clubs of America and our organization, along with Carvin County, ended up communicating together. And they said, yes, the Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming can be the lead in the communications with the Saratoga community. So that, that's how it began in twenty three. So fast forward in uh, this, this past year, uh, Danny in April, she said, um, let's get going, so I said, I think we have everything in place on our end, Boys and Girls Clubs of America. And it's a federated model, so we are autonomous, Boys and Girls Clubs of America. The, the local board is the five oh one C three, so the values can, they remain in the community, they remain with the members up to the s- the professionals from the board members down into the members. So we're, we're a local affiliate of a national organization is the way that we're designed. But the communication always is there and and having them on our team bodes well as we move forward in communities. So then uh, we're, we would that uh, that uh, Mr. Jennings, uh, principal, our superintendent Jennings. And then he said, you need to meet with Nick and he started sharing with us about uh, what Nick proposed in twenty one. And so we went down to the dojo and met with uh Nick and then that's, that's when the doors blew open in terms of what we can, what we, what we could possibly do together and the, and the needs that Nick worked on for years. Uh, Danny had a heart for uh, for what she saw in Casper and the alternative high school. And that's where we've, we've created this splendid uh relationship and collaboration that we're presenting to you today.
So where on do you have them at?
Great question, so um, so in Converse County and Johnson County and Fremont County and Detrana County are our reach. We started the Boys and Girls Club in Douglas in two thousand two, in two thousand ten. Uh, we all got, the boards got together and they said, hey, we'd like to be our own organization. At that point, Boys and Girls Clubs of America would give a stamp because there were meeting minimum requirements. Fast forward a few years later, they said, they said that um, it there needs to be certain community sizes for us to be able to do that, which is, which has been, which has been perfect because we network and we support the Boys and Girls Club in Douglas. But ours are DuBois and Riverton, Buffalo, Casper and Glen Rock. Those are the, those are the club sites that that are part of the Central Wyoming organization. We have board members from those communities that serve on the Central Wyoming Board as as Nick shared. And that's, that's our model, and then we have advisory councils that are active in each of the communities. And the board members that serve on the Central Wyoming Board are present at those meetings and preside over the advisory council meetings and those are, those the, the advisory councils are not a gov, it's not a governing group, it's an advocating group, help us plan and help us continue to develop and evaluate the clubs in the community. And then the board positions, those are governance positions that serve on the Central Wyoming Board. The, the budgets are allocated out. We are audited by part of our membership requirements annually. And then we have uh CF, we have uh uh financial professionals that are on our board, volunteer board members, professionals in what they do, serve on our board for, there's accountability um throughout the whole org- organization. Our CFO is, is um, it's been with us for twenty three years. And uh, and we have um, many of our staff have been with us for a long time. But we have, yes, we have uh many financial wizards that serve as volunteer board members on the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Wyoming.
Okay. The one in DuBois would be comparable to Saratoga. Uh, did you build a building there or how did that go?
So the, the DuBoi, we actually acquired that organization, so the, the DuBois, it started out as the DuBois Youth Activity Center, so it ran that way for years. And then they became their own Boys and Girls Club Organization. And then in two thousand nineteen, our boards and their boards came together and we ended up acquiring that, that Boys and Girls Club, so they are, they're in a, a church that's been renovated and and uh facilitated as a Boys and Girls Club. As a floor plan has been put together to uh, accomplish a voice.
Okay. Do you know on top of your head about how many kids go there in DuBois?
So the, the DuBois District has a hundred and thirty kids. It's, it's the population in DuBois is about a thousand people. And uh, and so we have on, on average between seventy five and a hundred members just from the DuBois community. Our reach here is, is Ca- Ca- our Carvin County's two. And so we believe that through outreach and the, and the partnership with the school district, that we will be able to to reach the kids in Carvin County School District too.
Okay. So that's where you've come up with approximately two hundred and fifty kids, right?
On an annual basis from after-school programming into the evening and summer, twelve months of program, summer day camps that would start from seven or seven thirty in the morning and go to five thirty or six P M. at night, depending on the need, and then after-school programming into the evening. And then we will be a big benefit in, on the four-day school, school week. We're open all day on Fridays on those uh, the four-day week, and that's, that's a a great benefit to the communities that we serve, those that have the four-day school week.
The only other thing I want, Nick, when you, you talk to the prior council, is this land directly off Elm Street going to the high school?
So we're talking about, I think it's Seventh and Elm. It's open for discussion. The original lease, we were proposing five acres around that area. I think we might want more, maybe now, because
Hey, it's not that, is, we do not own that strip of land.
Right, the county owns the library currently and they're distributing.
At one point, you know, on up, I don't
I've talked to the county about that and they, we've talked about maybe affecting a trade to square off their lot with the towns, right? But the most recent conversation I had with the um Madam Chairman, I guess, Commissioner Jones, was that the county is trying to get you all to take ownership of it anyway, so it might be a moot point by the time
Well, and that's
So but the facility itself, like right now, where we're asking, we're only ask, asking for access on town property. I think the actual building is, would be set fact, set back far enough, sort of back where the borrow pit is into the hillside, that's kind of the idea, that's the stuff we're talking about.
All right, yeah, I
Yeah, I'm aware that the, the street front is currently owned by the county.
All right.
And prior two and a half years ago, they indicated a willingness to do a swap with the town or just give it for a dollar or something, but now it sounds like they want to give it to you anyways, so.
Yeah.
Or give it to the town, I should say.
Haven't talked uh, to Sue in a while, so I don't know where they're at on that, but uh, we voted to go ahead and take the library and the land at the tree, if they can get everything worked out.
I mentioned it to her a couple of weeks ago when I was on the phone with her about something else and she's like, oh, yeah, that's, you're not going to need us anymore, the town's going to have all this internet.
All right. Been going to bring that up to you and discuss it with you, but I
Yeah, no, yeah, we're aware of that.
Okay.
Will it interfere with the bike track that is there, the, that the kids use, the dirt track that they use?
Ideally, no, I mean, the current site plan is, like I said, in that borrow pit area. But that's why there's some talk about maybe expanding beyond five acres because maybe there's room for improvements to that bike track that could be part of the club or you know, and uh, when we had our wish list meeting with the architect, there was discussion of let's build a playing field next to this thing, you know, so we don't have kids playing flag football in the uh outfield of the baseball diamond, you know? So we don't really know exactly what the footprint will be, but that, that lot is the general area.
Yeah.
And our intention would be, like I said, to improve upon anything that can be improved upon that's already there and make it better. There'd be no reason to, and I think some improvements were done by, on a grassroots effort last summer or something on that
Yeah.
Track and I went out there and rode my bike, I don't like it, it's fun, so it was a little bit, you know, a little nicer, yeah, so.
Okay. Back to the employee thing you had mentioned, you know, staffing, how many staff roughly do you propose, you know, do you figure you'd need?
Yeah, this, um, we, we operate our clubs in a, with a, a one to twenty ratio with the program, so there's two people always in the clubs for those, for those, in terms of those ratios. So our, our plan is to hire a director and an assistant director and two to three part-time staff that are regular, that, that will be regularly programming with the kids. In the summertime, those individuals will go full-time.
Perfect. Any other questions?
So you as an entity would control everything, you'd control the property, you'd control the building, you'd control the staff.
Yeah, 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 essentially, the Boys and Girls Club of, of the Platte Valley would be a branch of the Boys and Girls Club of Sen- of Central Wyoming with the board members being the, the key stakeholders in the organization.
Yeah. So the, you know, I think that's part of the resolution we're asking for is for the town to start the conversation and have a negotiation about what the agreement looks like to run this thing. And I think the idea is that, yes, they would take a lease on the site, Boys and Girls Club would. Yes, they would build the facility and essentially own it, subject to revert or the town would take over ownership when that lease terminates or whatever. Whenever fifty, eight hundred years will be long gone.
Yeah.
Uh, but then maybe there's a lease back to, so the rec side would still be controlled and operated by the town and we very much want that separation, we would want the town to do its own thing on the rec side, you know? And in the prior lease that we had negotiated with the town for the rec center, there was like exterior, you know, snow removal in the parking lot would be on the town kind of thing, like these kinds of things that the town could provide in kind at minimal expense, so you're already running plows up the road right there to clear the way for the buses. So that kind of thing. That's part of the conversation, you know, that has to happen.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Are you wanting us to vote on this resolution tonight?
We would ask, yeah, I mean, it would be extremely helpful for us on the fundraising side, like I said when I was here a couple of weeks ago. It's, it's constant chicken and egg problem with this deal, you know, I go talk to donors, they're like, hey, is the town with you? And it's like, well, I've gone and talked to the town three or four times and they all say, great idea, come back and see us when you have the money. Like I talked, you know, talk to the town, you know, and vice versa, I just constantly like, this doesn't, this isn't necessarily binding, other than it gives us access to do some meaningful planning efforts out there. But it also says the town supports it, we think it's a good idea, we recognize the, the value it provides, this potential collaboration provides the community and it gives us something to point to when we go fundraising, like, hey, the town has formally supported this, they're on paper doing so, we're having the conversation with them right now. We're working out the details of what the agreement might look like. So yes, we, you know, I, we would like, we would ask the town council to vote on it tonight if, if you're so inclined.
Is it, are you guys prepared to vote on it, council?
Yeah.
Okay. Jen, would you read uh? I need to read the whole thing. Probably should. Yep.
I'm glad I would have made it further.
It's going to be rest, twenty twenty five, that's resolution of the government body of the town of Saratoga, Carvin County, Wyoming, support of those recreation center and Boys and Girls Clubs of Platte Valley. Whereas the town's two thousand sixteen comprehensive master plan identifies certain community weaknesses, including disappointing recruiting and retaining employees, limited youth activities, inadequate indoor recreation facilities, programs and activities, unlimited indoor winter activities. Whereas Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming is a nonprofit corporation established in nineteen sixty nine for the purpose of providing positive places and programs for youth to grow in areas of academic success, good character, leadership and healthy lifestyles. Whereas Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming proposes to collaborate with the town to address, to address some of the weaknesses identified in the two thousand sixteen comprehensive master plan. Whereas Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming desires to construct a facility within the town that separately housed a proposed Boys and Girls Club and a proposed rec to be operated by the town collective, collective facility. A real property owned by the town located in south of West Elm Avenue between South Sixth Street and South Seventh Street. Whereas Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming operated the Boys and Girls Club of Platte Valley portion of the facility independently from the town to provide professional programming for K twelve youth within the community, including career readiness and financial literacy programs, youth court leagues and other activities to inspire all youth to reach their full potentials as productive, responsible and caring citizens. Whereas the town recreation department would operate the recreation portion of the facility independently from the Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming to provide citizens of the town's recreation, recreational services and multi-seasonal activities that enhance the physical and mental well-being of the citizens of the town. And through such recreational and leisure time activities to boost the health or morals, morals, sorry, safety, prosperity and general welfare of the entire community. Whereas the town governing body has determined that collaborating with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming will benefit the community and economic development of the town by increasing youth activities, increasing the availability of indoor recreation facilities, programs and activities and providing a venue and additional opportunities for indoor wi- winter activities for all citizens, making space available for creation of multimillion-dollar recreation facility at no cost to taxpayers, which may in turn assist in the recruitment and retention of the employees within the community. And that such collaboration in generally is the best interest of the citizens of the town and now and now potentially for years to come. Excuse me, so sorry. Whereas the town's recreation commission has recommended that the town's governing bodies support the project as described above, allow access to the site for purpose of preliminary site assessment and investigation and that the town enters negotiations with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming for an agreement that would govern the construction and operation of the facility. Whereas the governing body agrees with the recreation commission's recommendation and hereby finds that it is the best interest of the citizens of the town to collaborate with Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the town of Saratoga, Carvin County, Wyoming. That the town's governing body supports girls' collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming and constructs the facility. That the Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming hereby has permission upon reasonable notice to the town to enter the site and conduct the preliminary investigation analysis of the site as may be necessary or prudent to the plan for design and construction of facility, of the facility, including for survey work, geotechnical evaluation and any similar or related an- analysis of the site. That the town will make a reasonable good faith effort to negotiate an agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Central Wyoming that would govern the construction and operation of the facility on the site, although the town is not obligated to enter such an agreement if the parties are unable to agree upon terms. But this regulation is non by But this regulation is non, but this this resolution is non-binding, puts no obligation on the town. That the town makes no guarantee as to any future performance.
Any questions?
So because it's non-binding, we don't have to run it past the lawyer or anything?
Some barter, look down.
Okay. The other other thing would be our walkway project. Isn't gonna cross paths with that, is it?
No.
Like if they get to the point, it might have to put an approach in right there or something, put you down, bro, it shouldn't affect.
Okay.
I'm hopeful that we could coordinate with that effort.
Damn.
All the more reason why it's the perfect site.
Yeah, we'll be so close to the right of.
Any other question?
Let's do this.
Uh, only have support from the audience. Even though she sat on the wreck. It sure will entertain a motion.
I'd make the motion to adopt resolution. Number twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, seven, did you say? Have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seven. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? They can pick this up tomorrow night. Okay. We'll move on to council comments. I've got one. Was approached by one of the business owners, Sophia Bort. And with how many of. Hats and everything. And she's asking on the twenty ninth of November, she could close off four parking spots in front of her business. Just the parking area. For photos uh. Be taken for Christmas, whatever. She's gonna have an old pickup parked out there, the people can take their photos in front of them and also a single horse horseshoed. In one, and they'll have that set up for pictures. I told her, you know, I can't give you approval of that without taking it before the council, so.
I can't see as it'll hurt anything.
Uh, it'll be November twenty ninth and it'll be about probably from ten to four.
Yeah. Couldn't be a problem. What do you think, chief?
Just have to caution them about working their way out into the street. It'll be in front of her business, so. Whatever the council so chooses to do.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I'd make the motion to let to approve it. Or do it.
Close out four parking spots, November twenty ninth?
Yeah.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Hey. Are there any additional council comments? Hey, we'll move on to reports from department. We got the town hall. All you have is liquor licenses.
Yes, sir.
Hey. We'll start down through here. Uh.
We have to approve them individually?
What's that?
We have to prove them individually.
Yeah. Would you, okay, I have a liquor license for American Legion Post fifty-four. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve this liquor license?
I'd make the motion to approve that liquor license for the American Legion Post fifty-four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to Bella's. Do I have a motion? To approve this liquor license for Bella's Bistro Bar and Grill?
I'd make the motion for Bella's Bistro Bar and Grill liquor license.
Um, second.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to the Hen and Harvest for restaurant liquor license. Do I have a motion to approve it?
I'd make the motion to approve it.
The Hen and Harvest Restaurant Liquor License. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Run to the Saratoga Hot Springs Resort Retail Liquor License.
I'd make the motion to approve it for the Saratoga Hot Springs Resort.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Snowy Mountain Brewery uh microbrew permit with distribution. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd make the motion to approve for the Snow Mountain Brewery.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Valley Liquor. Retail Liquor License. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd make the motion to approve the one for Valley Liquor. This is making me sound like an alcoholic here. What do you guys wanna make a motion?
Some council members won't make a motion.
The shoe fits.
Yeah.
I would make the motion for it anyway.
To approve Valley Liquor License, second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Rustic Bar, do I have a motion?
I'd the most.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lazy River Cantina Retail Liquor License.
I'll make a motion to approve Lazy River Cantina Retail Liquor License.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hotel Wolf Retail Liquor License.
Make a motion to approve the Hotel Wolf Retail Liquor License.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't know, I don't understand why. You guys will not make motions. I I don't understand that. Everybody votes, I, you know. But anyway, we'll move on. Next item is, uh. John, I'll let you take this. Einco quote for a couple of extra cameras at the hot pool. Yeah.
Interim mayor, council. So the first thing, under town hall. Um, it's Einho- Einco quote, I was requesting to get a quote for a couple of new cameras down at the hot pool. Actually just watching the locker rooms on the exterior only, of course, not inside. So the first quote is for two cameras installation licensing. Um. And that comes to six thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. I decided the second quote that's in here would be piggybacking a project I've been wanting to do, which would. Add a third camera to this quote and install, which would be a camera actually looking at the little not-so-hot pool. The current camera in place, we don't really have coverage of that pool very well. And so since they'd be here doing that. Um, the camera that they'd be using is a little bit more expensive, because it's actually a digital zoomable camera with a wider angle lens. So it shows more area. Um, and then the install of that, since it's piggybacked onto this, the install would only be five hundred and fifty dollars to get it. Adding a difference of two thousand five hundred fifty dollars and ninety-seven sets for the other camera licensing. The power supply. Um, install. So the second quote, second option would be nine thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents, and that'd be for all three cameras to be installed. So what I'm, what we're presenting is the option of doing just two cameras. And later adding in. Another camera, which would cost more for install, or just doing all three right now.
Where would the money be coming from to pay for these? Is what budget does that come out of?
Hopefully it'd come out of the hot pool, full budget.
Anyway, um, budgeted a reasonable amount on the capital for that slide out of the hot pool for. Over there. To pay for whatever option you guys go with.
Would. With the placement of these cameras where we're gonna place them. It won't pick up any of the little hot pool. The not-so-high hot pool.
No, because the two cameras are gonna be, the way the building is set up. You've got basically the male locker room. The outdoor locker space with the drinking fountain and the utility room. And the other locker room and with, and then outside of that, it's vaulted ceilings, so you're gonna have to be right inside looking basically down at.
Okay.
Because we'd actually, one of the options I'd looked at and was hoping to do. Was actually just get one quad head camera. Forehead camera to have one looking at each of those and one looking at each hot pool, but with the vaulted ceilings, there's no place to put one to give you views of everything from one location.
There'd be no way to mount them on the north side of the pool? That direction?
Not, they would be able to look back underneath also at the locker room doors, because that's just the wood beams out there.
How many existing cameras we have right now?
One.
Just one.
One at the hot pool area, then there's one at the parking lot area.
Did we just update that not too long ago?
Yeah. For all the vandalism that goes on down there.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't update the cameras.
Oh, no, no. We didn't.
Those cameras have been there. At least eight years, if not longer now. And they replace an old DVR system. If you look around, there's old cameras that aren't in use down there that are part of an old DVR system. But I don't know how long those have been there.
We updated the airport. Up there, those cameras out there.
Yeah, the airport got updated with the quad head and then I. Added two cameras on the PD side, one in the entryway for when dispatch left and then one on the intercom outside.
And the town hall lobby.
That's right. That was the most recent one.
Because that one.
Was just part of the old DVR system that wasn't hooked up to anything anymore.
And that's the one.
Three thousand dollars seems a little high per camera, is it?
No, it's not three thousand per camera. It's, let me look at the quote here.
Nine thousand for all three.
About three thousand dollars per camera with installation.
Install, yeah. Because the cameras are, the locker room cameras are nine hundred eleven dollars and twenty-four cents each, and there's two of those. The wider zoomable camera is one thousand sixty-three dollars, which would be for the not-so-hot pool. Um, the worst part of everything, which is with everything electronic anymore, is five-year licensing is six hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents each camera. Power supplies are ninety-eight oh four each. Um, there's a bracket for the. Dome camera that'd be for the not-so-hot pool, which is a way it'll come off the side of the building. It's ninety-eight oh four. Shipping comes out to one twenty-eight eighty. So just the cameras and equipment for the cameras is five thousand. Four hundred fifty-six dollars and forty cents. And then the install comes to three thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
I have a question. Mr. Woods?
On the camera side, uh, because I remember right under. Chief Lear, there had been discussion of of the purchase of like a Frog's Frog Eye Camera or something like that due to the. Down the hot pool. But whatever happened down with that, that would have been under. Two years that he was on in the mayor's seat, I think that was approved, but. I don't know if anything would ever fall through on, I just remember there had been. For it.
They have never been installed anywhere. And I have the number five.
That is a good question.
With where these ones would be at, there shouldn't be any issues with the oggy. Our current one, only problems we have because of the fogging is because it is on the north side of the not-so-hot pool at the corner of the swimming pool. And so sometimes the fog coming up will wash out to where you can't see. Up to the locker rooms, but with these ones being up under the cover, it usually doesn't get quite as foggy up in there itself, so it shouldn't be an issue.
I think we need them.
Well, we gotta do something.
Yeah.
We've up to six walkthroughs a day and we're still having issues happening in the locker rooms.
Yeah.
And we can't put them that far.
We see who comes after them.
I could. Give a little insight for what happened one day, um. One of the contractors that claims down there. Um, there was a. Hot pool attendee that got upset with her and she was, he was yelling at her. She called me. Um, to try to get an officer down there. And I. With the camera we have now, I couldn't even. See what was going on, like I couldn't zoom in and. Even watch while the officers were on their way. I couldn't even see. So I personally, I I think it's very important and.
They had put somebody crap in the door.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So she come down, wasn't dressed, she didn't know what she was getting into. Uh, so she's locked the restroom, so nobody would go in and walk through it and. Uh. And he was very upset because his clothes were in there, but.
It's also a lot of feces in that.
Anyway, whatever the council wants to do, I I do believe we've got the money to cover it.
Well, I'd make the motion to go ahead and do the option two here, get the three cameras.
I have a motion on the table to approve. Option number two of nine thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, now you wanna move on to?
Start with my department?
Yeah.
Okay. The first thing I have for you, it's actually just one listed, apparently I forgot to give the clerk the other one, but we have two. Quote, um, invoices actually from Frontier Upfitting. The first one we'll address is for. The upfitting, well, I guess I should start. We have the new Ram pickup and the twenty twenty-five Tahoe are completely put together and in service now. And so that's what this first quote from Frontier Upfitting is the forty-one thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Which was for all the equipment and upfitting of the Tahoe. The initial quote that was approved was for thirty-nine thousand and some change. Um, pending the cost for shipping, which we didn't know was gonna be at the time. This includes the shopping, the shipping and other miscellaneous shops ties that were used.
So you went over by about three thousand bucks then?
Oh. Your math not so good, about fifteen hundred. Thirty-nine and some change to forty-one five.
Okay.
Maybe two, but I can't remember exactly what the first one was. I think it was thirty-nine nine-ish, thirty-nine eight something on the first one, but.
You figured that out, that all come out of shipping.
Yeah.
And in the quote, if you read down through the quote, everything had. Depending on shipping.
Yeah, pending shipping was in the.
And shipping, they didn't know what would be.
And they actually managed some of the equipment they got, the shipping ended up being about half the price they thought it was gonna be. But truck freight for all this big metal stuff is apparently expensive.
So do I have a motion to go ahead and approve and pay this, what was the dollar amount?
Forty-one thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
I'd make the motion to approve the. New quote, the forty-one thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and forty, five hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
The second. I'll second it. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Next one for Frontier Upfitting I have is for the install of the radio into the Ram. This quote was for one thousand thirty, or this invoice for one thousand thirty dollars. Um, that covered the labor. Uh, two antenna mounts, coax. And the equipment used. And actually Officer Lear and I were there the entire time and it took them about six hours for two of them to do it. So they're actually only charging us about half of what their rate was to get it done.
So we expect this with the next truck?
Correct, should be the same.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay this invoice for one thousand thirty dollars? Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay this invoice for one thousand thirty dollars to Ram Radio for the Ram Radio? And accessories?
I'll make the motion to. Pay the one thousand thirty dollars for the Ram Radio and accessories.
On the second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you. Next item I have is the hiring of a new part time officer. I was approached by Brianna Fall. To. For part time employment. Our department. She started in law enforcement in twenty sixteen in Florida. Um, she worked at two agencies there before moving to Tennessee. She's been out of law enforcement now for the past almost three years. Um, as she has a two year old child, her husband is now a K nine officer here in town with the sheriff's office. And she's looking to get back into law enforcement. Working part time for us. She would need to do. The two week mini basic, which they keep changing, so I'm not sure if it's actually two weeks at the academy and one week online or if they're back to. One week online and just one week at the academy. They keep changing that, so I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna work out yet.
But we have a year to get that done.
We actually have two years to have her get through the academy for part time.
Also, what would that cost? For the academy, nothing?
Just room and board, isn't it?
Yeah.
Turns well, basically.
Yeah, it ends up, for that one, it should be under seven hundred dollars for the mini basic.
It's actually pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Just so it's known, is Officer Kandler is actually out on sick leave now.
Sergeant Kandler.
I mean Sergeant.
Yes.
Kandler. Is out on sick leave now and. We're trying to get. Part time guys to help out a little bit, but they are on jobs too, so.
How many part times do you currently have?
Currently have three. Officer Dan Starr, Officer Tyler Christian and Officer Patrick Patterson.
You're down to four full times, including yourself?
Correct.
Now, the the same with the part time, we only contribute when they work. You know?
Oh, and I'd be hiring her at the part time rate of twenty seven fifteen hour.
Anyway.
No benefits? No benefits on part time?
Nope.
Uh, they do get.
Retirement.
Retirement.
Questions? We want to hire her?
I would say yes. I'd make the motion to hire Brianna Fall. As part time police officer.
As the rate of twenty.
Twenty seven fifty an hour.
Uh, I have a motion on the table to hire Brianna Fall at. Part time officer at twenty seven fifty an hour, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Next thing on my agenda is the. Repair of one of the twenty sixteen Ford Explorers up at Skyline Motors. Uh, as I was pointing out, just before the meeting started, the invoice you have is not the full invoice showing all the work that was done. Ended up replacing a CV axle, a tie rod end. Did an alignment and there was a service, oil change and such completed also. This bill came to one thousand twenty one dollars and seventeen cents. Which will come out of my vehicle maintenance and repair budget.
Questions? I have a motion to go ahead and pay Skyline Motors. One thousand twenty one dollars and seventeen cents.
I make a motion to pay Skyline Motors for two thousand sixteen Ford repairs and later. Thousand one dollars and seventeen cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, we'll move on to your ORV. Survey up. And we are not taking any more surveys, is that correct?
The survey, this survey is now closed.
Okay.
We closed this survey, I think the last one that came in was Monday. So it's up this Wednesday, not Tuesday anymore.
Okay.
I closed it online, I think Monday morning, and then the last card survey came in Tuesday. We ended up with four hundred and twenty responses to the survey between online and the mailers. Just, you have a copy of these nice graphs that Jen put together. She took all, every single survey and did them out in an Excel spreadsheet. Well, part of it, she had to modify the Excel spreadsheet that came from the online survey and then manually put in all the cards that came in. But as to the questions, you got a graph of how each question was answered, all the questions that were on that survey. Um, the first question was, do you think off road vehicles have a positive or negative impact on the community? Overwhelming response was positive and very positive. There was only. Let's just come to sixty seven negative responses, ninety five neutral, the rest were positive and very positive columns. Next, asked the use of off road vehicles, how often do people use them in town limits? That was kind of bounced all across the board between daily, weekly, monthly, rarely and never. Next question just went into what types of off road vehicles. One of the questions that was in there, or one of the options that was in there probably shouldn't have been, I didn't, I needed the waters a little bit because one of them was four by four trucks. Which almost everybody in town owns a four wheel drive truck, so. I don't know how I missed AI putting that one in there, but I missed it. Because yes, I did a part of it with AI. Um, next question that we got added in. Was if they, if the operators are using or carrying insurance. And overwhelmingly, yes, everybody has at least some kind of insurance. Very few of the respondents actually said that they don't want to carry insurance on their vehicles. Um, next question was. Do you believe off road vehicle use within town limits should be allowed within, without Wyoming NP registration? This one actually came through one hundred and fifty eight saying yes, two hundred and six saying no. And then fifty were undecided. But then this question kind of conflicts with the next one. With use. Do you believe off road vehicle use within the town limit should be allowed with an ORV sticker or town registration? Only a hundred said no, a hundred and eighty five said ORV stickers only. And there was only thirty eight votes for a town registration. Ninety two for town and ORV. But in my opinion, that kind of goes against the previous question of not having MPV. Overwhelmingly, was against having designated routes only as ORV trails to town. But there was overwhelming support. Basically three to one for all streets being designated ORV trails to town. And then. Quiet hours, it was asked if operating off road vehicles with other than uh, the MPV plates. Should quiet hours exist? Um, and I put ten to six, which follows our city ordinance for quiet hours. And that was two hundred and forty eight yes, a hundred and seventy no. So now we've gotten this information and. We can decide how, what, and if we want to do to proceed with changing. Anything. And I'd like to thank Emery for helping me with getting the flyers designed and sent out.
Okay, thanks John.
You're welcome.
Think what we'll do, John, is. Down with your officers. Put together a plan. That you think would be best. Bring it back to us. And then we'll take your plan, go over it.
Okay.
And.
I can tell you roughly now what the plan would be is probably just creating ordinance, creating all town streets as ORV trails. But it would require. That if you're going to be operating on the town streets as ORV trails, it'd be required to meet all the same statutory regulations to be licensed as an MPV. So you'd have to have insurance, you'd have to have a licensed driver. And then we'd also add the. In there.
Hairs and horn and all that?
Yep, that's all in the statute that's. Required to be able to be licensed. So all those same standards would have to be met to operate as an ORB on the streets. That's some of the biggest, because there was comments also, if you guys wanted to read the comments, Jen's got. Four hundred plus comments that you can go through, but the most common ones were people need to have insurance, people need to have driver's licenses. Which would be required.
So is it gonna be blinkers and all that too?
No, blinkers aren't required because they're not required on vehicles either. Some people still remember how to do hand signals.
But I think why those cars seem to have the op- the optional blinker, got it?
No, I just don't think they know where the switch is. Because I don't see the hand out the window either a lot of times. Or if I do, it's not signaling the turn.
Well, let's start compiling a plan and then we'll. Tear it apart from here, see where we want to go.
Well, dude, I can write that up into a real proposal for the next meeting and then we can.
Well, it'd have to be written up as an ordinance, wouldn't it?
Well, that's where I do the proposal and then, yeah, if everyone agrees to go that route, we'd have to work on an ordinance with the layer.
Yeah, that's the only way, it's gotta be an ordinance. And which. We'll look into.
I've already gotten drafts from other communities to have the same ordinance in place. So it shouldn't be too difficult.
And then we can take your plan, we'll go back to whatever. Graphs. And see.
Sounds good.
So. For statute right now, even if you made them ORV. They still have to have a license, correct?
No. The municipalities are allowed to change that as they want, that's written into statute. They can allow ORVs to operate if they make their streets ORV trails. The only one that we can't change would be First Street, except highway.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing you can do.
So that would have to be crossed at a ninety degree angle.
All right, let's do that. We'll go from there.
All right.
All right?
Yep.
That gives, council good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is everything I have for tonight.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
Move on to the fire department. Good to see ya.
Thought it was a short one tonight. So, uh, just give an update on the fire department, um. As far as calls, we've been, haven't hardly had any calls, we've had a couple, um. Smoke detectors going off up at, uh, where the old care center used to be at, where first created. Other than that, we've had, been pretty, pretty slow on calls. Um, October was fire awareness month, um. Department got with the priest and did, um. We took a truck, truck out to them, showed them what we look like in bunkers, all that, you know. Um, education stuff for at home, you know, uh. Checking to make sure you have smoke detectors, that they work, activation plans, all that stuff, so. Um, that was really well received, I think we went to, um, Head Start, I think twice. Um, Valley Village, I think twice. Um, the elementary school and then we had the homeschool kids come down to the firehouse, we opened it up for them, brought them down, so. Um, good opportunity to be out in the community and, uh. Um, be with the kids and and show them fire trucks and all that, so they all enjoyed that, um. Currently, we are doing one training a month, we're business meeting first Wednesday of the month, training third Wednesday of the month, and that'll go back to. Every Wednesday after first of the year. We are working on our, um, annual food drive for Christmas, um. With elementary schools or with the school district helping, um, I believe we'll be collecting food on the seventeenth and then. We're planning to hand out food to the community during the twenty first or twenty second. Tate's in charge of our social committee and he's working on getting that all lined up. Um, I'd ask if we could use Town Hall as a food drop spot. Um, usually we have like a couple carts up at the grocery store and then. Um, the kids do a good job at the school, collecting a ton of food, so if we could have Town Hall as one of the drop spots, that that would be appreciated. Currently, or we just voted one new member on, uh, at our last, uh, business meeting. Um, and then you do have a quote in front of you for new tires for the ladder truck for two thousand forty five dollars and sixty four cents. Um, this quote does not include disposal of the tires, there was talk about the tires that are on the ladder truck maybe. Um, seeing if the town needs them for anything or, um, I think there'd been talked about maybe carbon power might. Need a set or something, I'm not sure what we're doing there, but if we get approval for that, then the ladder truck would be pretty much ready to go in service. Um, all of the equipment we've bought, um, we've got almost all of the equipment in. Um, from Ellen Curtis to where we have it, to where it meets the recommendations or the requirements for IASO. Um, they're actually putting, putting stuff on the ladder truck tonight, so. It should be ready to go in service, the only thing we're missing on that is an AED, which was ordered. Five months ago. Five, six months ago, so. Other than that, I don't really have anything for the council. Uh, four. Yeah, that's, if you look, it's. Yeah, there's four tires on there.
Uh, do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the fire department? Uh, purchasing these four tires and have them putting them on the. Ladder truck?
I'd make a motion to approve the tire bill for two thousand forty five dollars and sixty four cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on your, uh. Babies have a problem with. Them dropping food off, but. I mean, they, we did it last year.
You can't eat it.
Yeah, you can't take it home now. Okay, yeah, we can.
Hmm, any questions from the council?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to Recreation Department.
Do you think, gentlemen? His first order of business I have is a lateral transfer. For an open gym supervisor, he's currently a lifeguard, is David Sharp. Uh, it'll be up to fifteen dollars an hour for open gym.
What's, he, he's a lifeguard now?
Yeah, so it's not a new hire, it's a lateral transfer.
Okay.
And fifteen bucks an hour?
Correct.
That what everybody else would make? Do I have a motion to go ahead? And do a lateral transfer with David Sharp? As an open gym supervisor? From a lifeguard?
I'd make the motion to. Let David Sharp do the lateral. Change from lifeguard to open gym supervisor for fifteen dollars an hour.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
On discussion on this, to with. One of his open gym supervisor is taking a leave of absence, so. We're basically just. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, my next order of business is a new yoga instructor, a previous yoga instructor. Got busy with her other job. So we're looking to replace her, and this young lady's name is Caitlin Hollerin. And she'll be at the contractor grade, just like our other. Fitness contractors.
I have a motion to go ahead and hire Caitlin Hollerin. As a new yoga instructor, since we just lost one.
I'll make a motion to hire Caitlin Hollerin as a new yoga instructor.
She's contracted.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Pretty much all I got, you guys got any questions for me?
How's things going over there?
Great.
Good, good.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Department of Public Works Planning Commission. My power of authority.
Gentlemen, as we are on this last lap of this marathon. Tonight, I will try to run quickly. Um, so the water tank inspection report, I wanted to bring that to your attention. That is in the, um, report that's in your boxes, I didn't put it in a packet, it's like forty pages long. There's a lot of pictures and stuff, I wanted to bring that up. Because that is a huge piece of our infrastructure and what. Because that is a huge piece of our infrastructure and what that inspection entails is really important for us to consider. Overall, the inspection was kind of, I would have keen it to someone who was inspecting it and trying to come up with every little thing to get a good deal on a used car. So there were a lot of things that were really brought up that were very de minimis. And then there was a few items that were brought up that we do need to fix. But overall, I was pretty encouraged. I think, you know, with a little love, there's still a lot of life left in that tank, which is
Good report.
Yeah, it was good for us and good for our community. So we'll be going over that at the next joint powers board meeting and subsequent one thereafter and kind of come up with a plan on what we think we want to, want to do in the near term with that one as we continue to contemplate that new tank for the future. We take, take the time to look that over and, and see what they had to say is pretty interesting. So
Oh, that's a good job.
Yeah, we are, EPA does also look at our tank on an annual basis and a lot of those things that are brought up in that report are not the same thing that the EPA looks at. So we have, we have a screening issue with our overflow. That was about the only thing that came up with the EPA. So we had already fixed that, just the corrosion items and stuff that are listed in there, things we're going to want to address whether pretty minimal at this point, where they continue to grow. So let's take the time to review that. And if you have any questions, let me know. Moving on to number twenty. So there's a bunch of data in that spreadsheet that kind of shows water sold versus water produced over the last, you know, five years. And it shows us averaging about a seventeen percent loss over that five-year period. If you look at the winter time, you'll see those really exasperated and those are probably due to leaks. Is probably why you see that percentage so much higher in the winter than you do in the summer. That leak volume gets kind of drowned it out by those larger production numbers in the summer. I'm attached to that as a couple of pictures of two larger leaks that were found during that survey. So we did find them right where he said they were and we did get them fixed. That big one was a valve that was, I don't think, I never think tightened. It was, the bolts were finger loose on it. So it's probably been leaking since it was originally turned on. So over the winter, we'll be able to track those and see if we see a reduction in that, that water loss. We've got some meters will be getting replaced to, that'll up our accuracy on that front. And then we're looking at getting the well meters replaced or the original ones that have been in there at the time. So they've lived out their useful life. Just tracking this number, you know, it saves money on power, gas, chlorine. It also keeps our fire flow capacity higher. So the less water we can waste, the, the better. We can, you know, average between, you know, four and seven percent year round would be a kicker. Kind of tightening up that model and moving forward, we'll keep it tracked. Like when I showed up here in July of twenty-three, like I ran the numbers right when I got here and I was like, four percent, this is fantastic. And I had to look at it again for like eight months and then I ran it again in the middle of the winter and I was like, oh, and that's why we're proud of the leak test and getting that done.
Yeah.
And so we'll keep that.
That was well worth it.
Yeah.
I didn't like testing.
Yeah, we'll keep that model updated and just trying to keep that number as low as possible moving forward. A quick update on that West Bench project and sewer project, we've got over twenty-two hundred feet in the ground. So as far as the open cut, we're cresting that halfway mark. So the guys are moving right along. Everything's testing out fine, light tests, mandel tests, everything's, looks good that they're putting in the ground. Craig and the guys over EA are keeping on top of it and we're, we're in a good product. Allies are looking good when they're done with them. And then we also kind of had a conversation about making sure things are, you know, the roads are swept up and stuff like it could start snowing. I don't want a bunch of gravel piles that get frozen in the middle of the street and stuff like that. So if winter comes, we'll be ready for probably a winter shutdown, but at the rate, the weather's going, might take through the first of the year. And if you guys got any other questions, warrant sewer wise, those are kind of the two things I wanted to touch on. I'm up at the airport, you seen digging up there. We, we're getting the service line out of the airport building tied into the system. We've got the lift station in and everything. And then all the landscape and everything started. So we just kind of pulled out of the way and let them do their thing. And now we're actually hooking the building up to that existing main line. That was there. So that's what they're, you should be wrapped up with that here first part of next week and then they'll actually be able to use that lift station that we put in.
They're getting a lot of little projects done. They've just been, been in the process of replacing the covert over at the Saratoga Inn and Emory was over there and Muck Boots today helping out.
Yeah, we're just trying to get as much of this, you know, little things while the weather's still good caught up. So we're not backed up. Oh, it should be in the Microsoft Edge tab. Oh, I think it's gone.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I will quickly describe number twenty-one then. I had a, the digital zoning map we were going to put up there on our website, the Sarah GIS who's constructing it for us, they, they sent me the block up for it and everything. I was just going to kind of show you guys how it operated and everything, but the link that I had is gone. So
It's pretty nice.
Yeah, I have nothing to, to show you right there. So I can email that over to you guys and take a look at it.
I saw it earlier. I lost the colors.
It is very, very pretty. But it, it looks just like the county GIS and you can click on a parcel. It shows you the address, the legal description, and then it has the zoning layer overlay to it so you can see what it's on.
Perfect. I like it.
Questions?
Keep up the good work. I see you saw what should have been done.
Yeah, we're getting there. We're getting there one board at a time.
Hey, you want to move on to your planning commission?
Yes. So, Al, you guys have had the public hearing. You have an opportunity to rule on the zone change. Depending on what way you choose to rule on that. Will, if it is approved, I'll get, I'll draft an ordinance up. It's got a, you can make your decision and then to fully adopt it by the way ordinance reads is it should be done by ordinance. So I get that drafted up and we'll have it for the next meeting depending on what you guys decide.
So is there any more questions about the zone change? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this zone change? In the area of County Road three oh one and the edge of Chatter intersecting the Chatterton Drive.
You just referenced it should have an application number on it, like one ZC twenty-five referencing.
Yep.
Yeah. I would, I would make the motion to allow this change.
And it's one ZC dash twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have a motion on the table to go ahead and approve this zone change from light industrial to heavy industrial. Number one dash ZC dash two-five. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll get that drafted up and have it at the meeting. There. In conjunction with number twenty-three, we have had that readjustment of the planning terms to kind of get them staggered and everything we did last spring. So with that, we have three terms that are coming up. And the way the bylaws are written is we have to advertise those before the end of the year and then select members to take those terms over. So we will have one two-year term and two three-year terms available that need to be filled by the end of the year. Again, send an ad over to the paper. So that is getting these start advertised start, I guess, Thursday tomorrow. So, well, we did have someone drop off Paul Luma the letter of interest for one of those positions, I guess, last week. I don't know if he was aware that there were vacancies or not.
So we'll see where it goes and then we'll read the, all of them. Yeah, at the same car.
And then we have a public hearing for a special use permit for a commercial kitchen at the next meeting. We're still working on some ordinance stuff. You guys price
What kitchens?
Here's the commercial kitchens, probably is doing some catering.
Oh.
And you guys will probably see some ordinance drafts here in a couple of months on some of the variance language and some other stuff.
Okay. Any questions for Emory about planning and zoning? Okay, we'll move on to your water sewer joint powers board.
So at the last meeting, we just kind of discussed what was going on with the West Bench project. And then we also went over, conveyed the same thing with the reports to them. So they're, those, then we'll talk about it.
Their next meeting is December tenth, twenty twenty-five, six P M. All right, any questions?
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the recreation commission.
I have nothing to report. We have not had a meeting since our last meeting. The next meeting will be December first at six o'clock here at the town hall chamber.
Okay, thanks, sir. Saratoga Airport Advisory Board, Ms. Brenda.
Yes. And how to have the East Department invoice the airport. Sign for the airport is almost complete around all the discuss the master plan here, the, or the back, you know, what would be had attacked. When they discuss the seal code and marking, that's accepted. Discuss the inner reality, whether with the northern or the southern building. Discuss the changes that I'm talking about in the history of the nation and that you take it, say, years that nothing should change. On the land, these for October were twelve thousand eight hundred dollars, that's a little low. But right now they are total for last year. So I saw two fronts, so I'll be after four. Yeah, one hundred and seventeen operations last month. And the busiest day this year so far, they had forty-two operation east quarters. YDOT does an economic impact study every year. And last year, you have economic impact, the airport had a value of seventy-one million dollars. This year it's said to be thirty million dollars. It's estimated that each visitor from the airport to the valley spent a thousand dollars. That's about it from
Okay, thank you. Any question for Brenda? What I got, and I just got this this morning. It's for crack seal at the airport. And the contract amount is a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and five cents. Do the crack sealing up there. Spoke with one of the board members and they thought they needed to move forward with this. The town's responsible for twenty percent of that cost, which comes out to twenty-seven thousand and some change. So I need the council's approval for me to go ahead and sign this and send it back to YDOT. Is there any questions? You have that proposal in front of you?
Was this put up to bid?
I don't know what the state does. We only paid twenty-seven dollars. We don't have to bid our part. That, that's a good question. I don't know how they do that. Whiteout paying for eighty percent of it. There was a little bit of concern, I guess. They want to, they're going to talk to the contractor and make sure it uses something that drives better. I guess they had some of them that get on a plane last year. Or the last time they did it. We need to move forward with it. I have until December twenty-fifth. If you guys want to look at it, we can roll it on over to another agenda. Another meeting. Whatever the council so chooses to do.
Well, if they need it, we might as well go ahead and do it. They said our part's only twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah. And signed, it was approved by Sean Burke, administrator and Nicholas T. Garcia, the Assistant Attorney General. So, well, I'll take a motion if you want me to go ahead and sign that.
I'd make a motion to move ahead with it.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve this ceiling at the airport. For a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and five cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll size it. That's all we have on that. Their next meeting is December eighth at three thirty here at the town hall. Hey, South Central Wyoming Emergency Medical Service, their next meeting is December fifteenth at twenty twenty-five at six P M in Hannah. The meeting minutes from their last meeting are in the packet. Are any new business to be brought before the council? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can adjourn. Thanks, everyone.